Roll call.
Bonnie McInerney Slater, present. Deborah Addy, present. Dennis Schumansky.
Have some excuse though.
Joanne Churkey. Brian Treppa.
Here. Approval or amendments to the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna skip the minutes, go to...
Why don't I do a motion to table the minutes to the next meeting?
I'll second it.
All in favor to table the minutes to the next meeting?
Aye.
Postpone, yep. Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance number 126. There are five members on the ZBA, four of whom are present tonight. At least three members must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant variance. Three members constitute a court. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will first present his or her case and public comment regarding that issue were filed. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you're welcome to leave or stay as you wish. So, we are paperless, so I'm doing it off my phone. So, open up new business. So, first, today we have ZBA 2021-003. Owner, representative of 10166 St. John's Drive, or representative? Please come up and... Thanks. Okay, geez. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Mike Stevenson from Timberwood Homes. And the address is, in my personal address...
Yeah, yours, Mike.
8390 Marl Road.
Dan Roschowski, homeowner, 10166.
Thank you.
So, we're here today. Dan would like to put a covered porch area off the rear of his home. It's a 45-foot setback in the back. The covered porch would, you know, the proposed covered porch would require a 6'4", you know, ask for a 6'4" variance for it. And all it is, is just gonna be like six-by-six posts, holding it up, shed-style roof with one gate line in the middle, 612 pitch. And the lots on that side of the road are fairly, you know, they don't have a ton of depth to them. So, you know, it's tough to get like a garage, a nice ranch, and then, you know, a porch off the back of these without going into the setback a little bit. There's plenty of pergolas and other porches on the road that looks like they go into them. Dan's got, also has letters from the neighbors, like for their, you know, consent. So, if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Okay. Like to open up to public comment? Anyone wanna speak? Can I have those letters, please? We'll read these letters. Thank you. Thank you, because we're paperless now.
We'll read those. All right, the first one is from the owner of 10170 St. John Drive, Clay, Michigan. To whom it may concern, this is to advise that we have absolutely no objection to our next-door neighbor, Dan Roschowski of 10166 St. John Lane, Clay, Michigan, to have a covered patio. Dan had discussed with me what Timberwood was going to do, and we are more than fine with the plans. If you have any questions, you can be reached at Anthony and Barbara Jacobs. This is from the owner of 10124 St. John Drive, Clay Township, Michigan, 48001. To whom it may concern, this is to advise you that we have absolutely no objection to our next-door neighbor, Dan Roschowski of 10166 St. John Drive, Clay, Michigan, 48001, to have a covered patio. Dan had discussed with me what Timberwood was going to do, and we are more than fine with the plans. If you have any questions, I can be reached at... Sincerely, a name I can't read. Do you know the neighbor's name?
I do not, no.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Kind of like a doctor. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? All right, close, please.
Brian, before they step away, I do have a question. You said 6'4". The notice was for 6'2"?
Okay.
Do you know which it is?
I think it's 6'4", but I mean, 6'2"...
Gary, do we, can I, Gary, do we have that? Do you, I mean, we have the measurements, just...
Somebody changed it.
Brian?
Somebody changed it right there. It was this, and then...
Yeah, first it was 40, 40'8", and then it went to 38, 8 inches.
Yeah, that was, the 40'8" was when we previously said that.
That was last month, yeah.
But we had, like, a communication error, so he wanted two more feet, so that's where it added the two feet. I also have elevations in a drawing, too, if you guys would like to see them. Would you like them?
Yeah, we have, we have.
We have that. Because again, if it was notice draw.
I mean, can we make an executive decision on two inches?
We can grant it, the two.
I mean, the math is right there. I blame it on a fat thumb for me. I'm just looking at the updated ones, just to see if it's changed. I have last month's.
This is the notice that was in the paper.
Yes, I got that one.
If we were to grant the variance, can you live with 6'2"?
I, I mean, I would, I would say yes. But I'm just not sure why it said 6'2", because the math is 6'4".
I understand that, but what it says in the legal notice is 6'2". Nope, I printed this month's back up. This went in on 3/31/21.
Again, I'm at... The first time was a miscommunication. This one is more of a math error, maybe on our part. Because I can't see where Gary put it at 6'2", and I can't see where Mike put it at 6'2". I can't, I don't know where the... I see what Gary's... 38, 8, and the drawings say 38, 8. He's got 45, I mean, he's got, Gary's got everything on his... I think it was just a, a small misprint, typo. I mean, the drawings are, I think, yeah, I mean...
No, I understand what you're saying, but the drawings didn't go in the paper, and they're not part of the legal notice.
Say that again?
So, the drawings don't go to the neighbors and all the surrounding area, and we have to go by what's printed in the legal notice.
I mean, if that's the holdup, like, we can make it work.
It's an open porch, right? Not closed, I mean, you're not obstructing. Not that that counts anymore, but I'm just saying that it is open.
These are rather long lots, though. I wouldn't say that they're that short, that unusual.
120-foot depth. Nice-sized lot.
Still narrow, too. Is that a 50-foot lot, Mike?
75.
75.
Jan, for this area, it's not that narrow. This has not been built already, correct?
No.
Okay.
All right, well, he's sitting back at 50, 52, 5? Mike, is that right? Is that what that?
Yeah, I think so.
52, 5?
Did you build...
And go to 45?
Did you build this house?
No.
Well, to me, that makes a difference as far as self-created.
He's owned it for a year.
Two years.
Two years.
You say in here that it's located on the outer oxbow of a curve or turn on the canal. Does that make yours different than other ones in the area?
Ours, ours sits back further than others, because of the turn.
I guess that could be...
We, we wouldn't obstruct anybody's view just because of how the house sits further back on the turn. And there is pergolas next to us that are further out than I want to go. And then there's actually our other neighbor that has a shed down on the dock.
Anything, Joanne?
Gotta say something.
Well, I, I mean, how can we solve this? It's 2'4" thing. And we're back?
Well, 6'2" is what it was listed at, and they're asking for a 6'4" variance.
Well, I think we could only grant it at 6'2", and they would just have to revise for two inches.
The siding is two inches.
I said, I think all we could do is approve at 6'2", if they're okay with that, rather than sending it back and republishing. And they could just revise their drawing by two inches.
Was that motion?
Do you want me to make a motion? I have a motion. Take a motion to approve requested variance at 6'2", for the side that... Due to the length of, or the lack of depth on that side of St. John Drive, and the fact that it is located on a curve in the canal, which changed his setbacks. He did not build the house, so it was not self-created. It would not confer special privileges, as other people have similar structures. And it is not contrary to the ordinance. It would not block anyone's view.
I'll second you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Um... Yeah, no. Joanne Churkey?
Yes.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Bonnie McInerney Slater?
Yes.
Brian Treppa?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't let her fill out the paperwork, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go on as fast as you can.
Nope, that's all right, take your time. It's like punishment, you get to do the motion and...
I know.
Well, you should not yell at us, so repeat, repeat. Can't believe the snow this morning. I cannot, I was, just couldn't believe it.
We should not be having this.
We had five inches in Toledo.
Oh, my!
Yes, it was five inches.
Oh, my! Yeah, I'm glad it was down there.
Andy, right now is too much. Ready for a warm-up?
Somebody was like, "Fine." "Dust off inches." Somebody said, "Dust off the tulips." I'm like, "Tulips, they..."
I know, everybody's like, "Oh, I'm planting my garden." I'm like, "God, I thought you were always planting your garden."
May.
Isn't it like, next month we plant gardens? It's like, "No, we're planting it now." I'm like, "Ooh."
You're not supposed to do it till May, something. Make a multitask.
All right, perfect. All right, we'll go to the next one, guys. All right, so the next one is, under new business, is JZBA 2020-003. Hang on a second.
Yes.
What's the other one underneath it? So, it's JZBA 2021-005? Am I reading this?
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
I would say we're gonna go with the JZBA 2021...
Right.
-005 at 6322 Marina Drive.
Did you guys refile this at some point? Was it titled 20 or 21?
Yeah, I got it right here, it's coming from me.
I'm sorry?
When did you file it, 20 or 21?
It would've been late '20, probably.
Oh, we'll just go with both numbers.
I mean, they're both on this.
Yeah.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Hi, Jim Brown, 6322 Marina Drive, 6322. Just want to start out with, I guess, we did, we did build the gazebo. We did not certainly do that with the intent of disrupting any of the neighborhood, or the neighbors, or anything. We finished the gazebo late summer of last year. It was built, you know, with the intent of beautifying the house, making it more useful. The, we did provide some drawings to the city, to the township, for the sizing gazebo. You've got some CAD drawings. We provided some pictures. We also contacted all the neighbors that we could get in touch with and provided their documentation. We'd like to thank that, you know, the gazebo adds some value. I realize that there were maybe some considerations. What I thought were proper codes at the time, or proper setbacks, you know, we had a side setback that we considered. We had what we thought were the proper setbacks from the back property line, which is a seawall, in this case. Maybe those were not correct completely, unfortunately. We did, uh... Look at some other, there's a lot of other properties in the area that have a similar type of construction, where they've got structures, sheds, and so forth, that sit as closer, and many times closer, to the seawalls, in some cases on the seawall. So, I didn't think we were doing anything that was out of character or unusual for the area. Because there's a lot of very similar types of... And I've got some aerial photos of the area, if that would be of any help, that kind of shows some of the other structures that are in that neighborhood. I guess what we're asking really is, you know, we've owned the property for, it's been in our family for a long, long time, which really has no bearing on this decision, I realize. We do try to keep the property up. We try to keep it maintained. Try to do things that are not objectionable to the neighborhood. Certainly like your consideration on a variance for the gazebo that is there at this point. But any thoughts or questions that we can, any questions that you have that we can answer, happy to do that.
Okay, hold one second, please. I'd like to open up public comment on this case. Hang on, we have some letters, I know. Can I read the letters first, or you, did you write a letter?
I was one of them.
Then, all right, would you guys give him some space?
Sure.
And then I'll let him come up, and then we'll just delete one of his letters, or that we have written.
I brought some pictures. Sure to take a look at them.
I'll look at them.
We seen them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard Kaminski, 6316 Marina Drive. I moved in about six years ago, and looking at the area and the housing, there was a lot of improvement in the last five to six years. People adding, dollying up. One of the things was Jim and Linda had put in for their shed, which was dilapidated and falling down. And with this, they believe that the gazebo was authorized at that time. Maybe a misunderstanding. However, looking at it and seeing the setback, and the fact that it's a post structure, you'll see that in the pictures, there's actually no blockage of the view. In fact, I was standing in my kitchen, which is three houses down from him to the east. And when you looked west, I could still see the cars on Merrill Drive. I could still see the, the properties down the canal. And as he stated, there are some structures that are closer. In fact, there is a group of trees right next to his gazebo that stand out further. And, I mean, not to be flippant, but they resemble a post style, so they are in that same area of sightline. So, their beautification, their upkeep, they do live out of town, and I've never seen the grass overgrown. I've never seen anything collecting. Everything they've done has been for the beautification of the neighborhood, and they keep it up very well. It does look nice, as you'll see on those pictures. Hopefully, you'll see in their favor. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? We do have some letters.
To whom it may concern, I live at 6322 Marina Drive. I heard that they have to go in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the gazebo that they have built. I live right next door at 6320 Marina Drive, and I do not object to them having the gazebo up. In fact, I thought the gazebo was a great idea, and that it makes the property look good. And then the rest of them, I think, are just a form letter. To whom it may concern, I do not have any objections to the gazebo, which was constructed at 6322 Marina Drive. Brian Swetzkord at 6318 Marina Drive. Additional comments, it's a lovely addition to our neighborhood. I do not have any objections to the gazebo to be constructed at 6322 Marina Drive. Henry Newman at 6328 Marina Drive. And the last one, I do not have any objections to the gazebo, which was constructed at 6322 Marina Drive. Kelsey Doucette at 6325 Marina Drive.
All right, anyone else? All right, I'd like to close public. You guys want to see these?
Are they in the actual gazebo?
Yeah.
This is an after, after...
Correct, no, I...
We just supplied pictures as well, I thought.
Pardon me?
We did supply pictures as well, didn't we?
Yes, yeah, we did.
It's an after the fact, isn't it?
Right.
Yes.
And I just would like to state that your view is directly in front of you, not down the road.
Right.
How far away is it from the water? 17 feet, oh, 17 feet off the seawall, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, one more time.
17 feet off the seawall, 17 feet.
You look at this one, you can see how close it is?
Yeah, I just didn't know that. I know the neighborhood, I grew up there.
Hmm?
I grew up there.
Oh, really?
I love it.
Is it my understanding that, Mary, Brian? Brian?
Pardon me?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
You built the shed first?
Yes.
And then the gazebo got added on?
Correct.
Good-looking gazebo. Looks like a tiki bar, I don't know.
Terminology, I suppose.
I think there's a couple tiki bars down there.
The entire township there are.
I have those aerial photos, too, if those are any value, guys.
I don't think they would really add anything, because...
Yeah, we, I have them. We, we do have them. I just have it, they have it on paper for them.
Oh, okay.
Unless you have different thing you submitted.
Well, these are just kind of aerial photos of the other stuff that's around.
Well, I guess, to us, it doesn't matter what other stuff's around. It's just focusing on this one property.
Understand.
You guys, I, I think it fits right in with the neighborhood. All the neighbors are a lot closer. I, I remember when I was younger, there was a whiteboard house, you know what I mean, house-type deal, that's right on it. Very, you know, I, I don't see that being any...
I don't either, but...
I mean, obviously, you wish you wouldn't have done it, and then, but in the same token, I thought...
I guess, how do you see us getting practical difficulty when the owners themselves say there were no practical difficulties with the property per description and subject to any? How do we get past any of these? I mean, there really isn't a practical difficulty. I don't know, I guess. Tell me how we get there.
And it's an after the fact?
Right. I'm not saying...
Can I ask Gary a question?
Sure.
Did you inspect the shed, Gary, or no?
I did inspect the shed.
On the drawings in the shed, was the gazebo drawn on that shed?
No. The original plans did call for an overhang, and, you know, we turned that down because it went into the encroachment. You know, the setback.
And you finalized out the shed?
Yes.
And then it was built?
And then, yeah, sometime after that, it was built.
I mean, I don't see anything really unique about this property.
The only thing I can say is, almost every house down there has a tiki bar.
Right.
They're all closer to the water. I'm trying to get to practical difficulty and unique situation. Perhaps is the fact that they're all there already.
But that's not what a practical difficulty or unique situation is. We're trying to bring things into conformance, not...
Right.
...create additional non-conformance by allowing things that, under the ordinance, aren't supposed to be there. And I agree, I mean, this is a hard one. It's a beautiful gazebo, but... It's a beautiful gazebo, but we, as a body, have to legally come up with criteria in order to approve it. And I'm just having a really hard time finding anything in this application or the property itself that would lead me to that. It's pretty isn't a reason that we can approve, unfortunately.
I'll make a motion to deny this because it doesn't matter what's on either side of them. And it's an after the fact thing, they built it without permits, and there's no practical difficulty.
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny. Rule call, please.
Hold on one second.
Yep.
All right, Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Yes, to deny. Deborah Addy?
Yes.
To deny?
Yes.
Bonnie McInnes Slater, yes, to deny. Brian Trappa? No. Unfortunately, it was denied.
So, I guess, and what do we, do we have to just tear it down? Is that what Gary...
You'll have to talk to Gary, the building official, and, and he'll let you know what to do from now. I, I, we, we don't, can't tell you what to do on that, on that.
So, the other thing, too, was, yeah, the other thing, too, is what was Kurt's address? So the one that was just built recently, and they allowed it, was just down the street, two, two or three doors down. Do you have the address?
I think the biggest problem right now is, you know, that you had the chance to do it the right way, and you finalize out the shed. I asked Gary the right questions, and I think that's, you know, we can't allow everyone just to build outside of it. It's a lovely structure, I understand. I'm, I'm sorry, it, it's just that we have to abide by our laws or rules or ordinances, because if not, everybody's just gonna do it. I'm sorry that it's happened, but in the same token, we didn't cause it. So, you know, that's, that's the only thing, and, and, you know, like I said, I love the neighborhood. I, I know exactly what, you know, the neighborhood is, consists of. Unfortunately, it's just there's, you know, ordinances that we do have that we have to follow, if not come in front of us, ask for forgiveness, to break that ordinance, not for forgiveness because you already broke it. I guess that's what our, that's what we're saying right now. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just talk with Gary tomorrow, or, or, you know, whenever he's back in the office.
Okay.
Friday tomorrow? No, yeah, he's, he should be around tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to unfinished business? Anything?
I don't believe so.
I don't have anything written down here? Everyone got that piece of, well, we'll go on that one next. A report for a planning commission, from planning commission?
Yes. We had a public meeting on March 24th to regulate caregivers of cannabis for the township. And it was a very lengthy meeting. I found that typically, people don't understand the caregiver part of it, and so that made the meeting a lot longer. And some people were thinking, we're trying to manage growers, but there's no growers allowed in the whole community. These are caregivers that grow for their patients, if you will. And so we came up with some regulations, and they're actually incorporated into the ordinance under home occupations. So they're going to be treated like a home occupation. So there was some language that was going to be drafted, and we were supposed to have a meeting next week, but it got canceled by the planner, so.
Any other hot topics coming up that we know of? Or that you can say?
Yes.
Just some people, I'm just saying, you guys, wherever the camera is, can go to your meeting to see...
Yeah, absolutely. There's waterfront fences coming up. There's short-term rentals coming up. And boy, that's a hot topic.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's an okay topic unless you live on a street that's forty feet wide, you know, so, is it forty feet? Anyway, so...
Probably less than that.
They're kind of narrow. Anyway, so those are coming up, I don't know when. I was kind of surprised they canceled next week's meeting. But those are the hot buttons coming up.
Perfect.
Do you don't know why the meeting was canceled?
My understanding is planners canceled it.
Oh, the...
The actual planners canceled it. Because it's supposed to be in person, and for whatever reason.
Because that was brought up by Rashad Mark. He said he didn't know why it got canceled.
I asked, yeah, I asked Cindy, I said, who canceled the meet? How does this happen? And she says, the planners canceled. I said, well, do they have to come to the meeting? I don't know.
No, they don't have to.
I know, it's, so, I don't know. Yeah. So...
All right, well, thank you on that.
You're welcome.
Any other matters from ZBA? Any, we just got this one, I, I do like this.
Yeah, I do like that sheet.
Definitions, I mean, I think we should, if it went in doubt, read them at the meeting, you know, definitions of each one. I did, and I couldn't, you know?
Yeah.
You do read them in your scope, but I don't think people are really understanding this. This, you know, like Bonnie said, the one lady is, oh, we don't have any practical, well, you have to start there.
Right.
You know, and I don't think about this.
Typically, the hardest one to get through.
Might be a good idea if she starts handing these out with applications.
I think so, too.
Yeah, I...
So that the applicant can read through.
I was squirming for them, I'm like, oh...
It's nice, it's nice.
Because it's a beautiful facility. But gee whiz, you know?
There's too many, too many problems with this. It's far as following, like, rights is our rules. You can't say, oh, well, let's figure out how we can... No, you can't do that.
Well, it should be our job to figure out how to, like, figure it out.
I was trying, I really was.
Right.
I, I like that, I like when we get...
Yeah.
That, that helps out, so. Anything else?
No.
Any public comments? Close public comments? Joanne, you're up. Well, you're supposed to motion for adjourn.
I thought I was supposed to say something.
No, I'm teasing you, I always tease you.
If you have something to say, go ahead.
If you have something to say, we will definitely listen.
The motion, you can watch it, turn up, turn up next door, and you can watch it, or use it.
Is it, did you have a good meeting?
Yeah.
All right, good.
We got a lot accomplished, with so, a lot of things going on.
Well, I think it's, I, I think it's kind of rude when you're looking down on your phone, or, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to not prove a point, but in the same thing, I think capless does have his point, maybe to say, you know, maybe not make unlimited copies, but in the same token.
Or, like you said, have out there.
I mean, I read it, I mean, it, it works, but in the same token.
Do you want to keep these pictures with that?
Oh, we should have them back.
I can, I can get those back.
Yeah, put them in here. And then, and then...
Yeah, Gary's gonna see them tomorrow, I'm sure, so. But on that, did you make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All right, all a favor?
Aye.